All my messages are tuning in. Um, is everybody ready? You have your microphones on? Okay. No, we're good to go.
You're on.
Thank you so much. Knock over the mic. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for attending. Can we open the meeting up? Please join me. Rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Thank you. Okay. And I'm calling the meeting to order at 6:35 PM. Do we have any public comment tonight? There being none, I'm going to continue on. Department comments, none. Okay. So now we're to the discussion and possible vote section of our agenda. And although it's not as long as it's been before, the materials are voluminous for this particular packet. So I would ask, like, some of the documents, perhaps if you have hard copies, members could save them. You could leave them in your mailbox here. They're here if you need to go look at them again because I think it was 180 pages? Am I about right? Of packet? So I'm thinking maybe we can save a few trees and also just save on the efforts of people in the town hall making copies. Maybe we could keep, like, a backup copy here and other people, if they want to leave it in their mailbox, no one will touch it. It'll be there when you come back. That was just my thought. So we have nine items. The first up is the update from Select Board Member Jason on the Woodya and ECC Working Group. Number two is just an update for myself on the trash and recycling. Number three is an update on the 150 Center Street Request for Expression of Interest. Number four is a discussion, continuing discussion on 46 Washington Street Building. Number five is a brief discussion on the Shanahan Field House rental. It sounds like a field house, but it's a house on a field. When I read it, I thought, oh, we have a field house on Shanahan? No, we don't. We don't have that. And then six is, again, update from our town administrator on valley screw discussion. Seven is the general bylaw review, and we reviewed those at our last meeting, I believe. Eight is a fairly lengthy document on the zoning bylaw for our review. This pertains to the MBTA rules, right? And all of that, yes. So it's pretty lengthy. Nine, we have a copy for the first time of the fiscal year 2026 budget for under, up for discussion. And then we go through the regular portions of our agenda, appointments and resignations, approval of minutes, old unfinished business, other items not reasonably anticipated, town administrator time, select board time, and correspondence, which I can read through at the end of the meeting. So without further ado, I'm going to turn over the chair to Jason Naves. In just a full disclosure and transparency, I'm an employee of Woodya Vocational High School, so I do not participate as a member of the Select Board in discussions or votes on that issue.
Crunch. I'll just sit down.
Should be a quick update, so don't go too far.
That's all right. I'm just gonna sit down with the people.
Oh, okay. There we go. That'll make it a lot easier.
Yes.
All right. So the, we had a Woodya meeting. It was a little shorter than everybody expected. If you remember last meeting, we gave you the what they were looking at in terms of to do a joint school, a separate school. Some of the concerns that were brought up was to keep the high school experience for the students, not necessarily fully integrate them in with the college. So that seemed to be where a lot of people were going, their own separate building. I know when they talk about partnering with the state, I thought them, basically allowing the building for Woodya to be on the state land instead of actually trying to sell it to them would be a great way to do that type of partnership. It would show a commitment on both sides. So we talked about that a little bit. There's three sticking points on whether or not it's going to move forward and get the SBA behind it, and the deadline is July 1st. And you're gonna need 11 of the communities to understand that the feasibility study is not going to be reimbursable from the SBA. However, they did mention that they are looking at doing outside sources to get that funding. So the towns won't be on the hook for the entirety of it, which right now is estimated to be somewhere between two and two and a half million. The feasibility study does have to include the existing location for Woodya, which had already been done when they did it originally. So it seems a little bit of redundancy, but it's part of the rules and the process, unfortunately. And there was one other point, which I remembered earlier.
The regional agreement.
Regional agreement, which that was also a sticking point. A lot of that was because Havel came in and said they were very unwilling to open the regional agreement because of the way the capital was situated. They were afraid it was gonna greatly impact their ability to, their budget, basically. But now they are very willing to do it because without them, this doesn't happen at all. So the mayor made that statement, that they are willing to look at it, reopen it. Everybody agreed that that agreement's basically null and void anyway, once they move forward, if they get to do a joint venture. The last of the sticking point is gonna be Raleigh. They haven't been at any of the meetings, so nobody really knows where they're at. Even though the nine communities there said that they were willing to open up the agreement, redo the agreement as needed to make this happen. Georgetown wasn't there, but it was believed that they were willing to do what was necessary. So they're reaching out to Raleigh. So we should have more information at the next meeting. The fees, the Donahue Institute at the college is doing a feasibility study on what that would look like. They did not have it complete at the time of the meeting. They gave a little brief synopsis, which is included in the package. They're gonna, they should get this this week, and then it's gonna be sent out. And so I'd like for everybody to take a good look at it so next meeting, we can actually go over it and see where we would like to be in terms of what the school looks like, in terms of combining classes, at what level, the campus itself, and just go over it and discuss it. So when I go into the meeting, I can have a better idea of what the board in general would like, and also consider what the community might wanna, will actually approve, because that's gonna be tough as well. Because if we all agree to it, and it goes to vote and doesn't go anywhere, nothing's gonna happen as well. So, does anybody have any questions?
I had a question. Was there any discussion about changing their system of enrollment through a lottery system rather than through merit?
There was, there was nothing discussed there. I know there was an article where the Governor Haley had mentioned that.
Yes, yeah.
And that's what they were looking at. And I believe it's a nationwide thing that they're looking at doing.
Okay.
I personally don't think that's the proper way to go, because the technical schools are supposed to be taking a lot of the students that wouldn't be able to get a job after high school and give them an education in a manner that they can, they'll be able to actually get a job. So I think it goes against the mission statement for the school, personally. That's my personal opinion. And you see that with, when I talk to students that go to Woodya, some of them work at Market Basket, and they say things like, we don't have homework.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's the type of education that they get because that's what they're capable of doing.
Yep.
And the way that they seem to be taking the school is making it into a prep school for college.
Yes.
And that's not what it's supposed to be, as far as I'm concerned.
I agree with that. Okay.
Yeah, Jason?
Yes.
You said Raleigh was, with Raleigh, they didn't, hadn't made the decision what they want to do?
They haven't been at any of the meetings, so we don't know where they stand.
Are they, are they looking to go elsewhere, perhaps?
We don't have any idea, because they, they haven't been at the meetings, they haven't been part of the discussion. So I know a big sticking point for them was, look, if she's not willing to open the agreement, then there's no point in coming to the meetings, because it's not gonna go anywhere. So originally, it seemed like they'd be on board, but a big part of that was having Havel say that they're willing to open up the agreement, because it takes all 11 communities to, to have for that to happen. So hopefully, now that Havel's on board with that, somebody's reaching out to them, and hopefully he'll be at the next meeting. But either way, we should know more by the next meeting. We good?
Right, yeah, thank you.
All right. I'm gonna turn it back over to Kathy Castrenellis, our chair.
Okay. So, next on our agenda is the update on the trash and recycling. I think we've let everyone know, I do have to post, I know that, right? For the 13th, and I think we agreed on 6:30 PM as a start time, because we want to make sure that people have time to get there. It is a public information meeting, which means we will have a short presentation, and then we want information to be given to the public. So we're going to open it up for people to ask us questions, to ask, we'll have the expert from our state with us, Brian Walsh, who's very knowledgeable about what's going on everywhere else in the state, outside of Groveland. We'll have our town administrator, who has been participating in these monthly, I want to call them hauler meetings, but I don't know, it doesn't sound right. But to be, because of that, she's become extremely well-versed and knowledgeable in the industry and in what's happening, and so, and we'll have the carts available as well for discussion and demonstrations of what can and can't fit in this size container, because I know, obviously, sometimes it boils down to the simple things in life. You want to know, how much can I fit in this cart? You know, will I fit my trash in this cart? But we'll also be giving information on the overarching reasons for, why aren't we just going back out to bid like we always did? Why are we changing? And we will have that information, and kind of the short summary of it is that the hauling industry is changing. I mean, it's not just the landfills that are closing, it's the hauling industry itself. It's extraordinarily expensive, and there's a lot of liability involved in having workers who have to get off of these trucks and manually lift trash carts that may or may not have heavy or sharp items in them. And there's a lot of injuries involved in that. And so the, the hauling industry is moving away from the manual pickup. And in order to become a town that is available to get proposals from haulers that do the automatic pickup, you have to have the standardized carts that can withstand the hauling arm. You can't just let people go out and buy whatever they want. So we need to have the standardized carts that are strong enough and built for these arms to be able to lift them and not be crushed or falling apart, and, and that's a big deal. And then on the town side of things, very quickly, and we'll tell you this in more detail at the information system, if you look at the trash budget going back, back to like 2016 or so, and you look at, it's the percentage that it represented in our, what I call our discretionary spending. And that doesn't mean spending we could do without. It means the spending that we actually have any control over, which is a very, very small portion of our budget. So that spending would include the public safety departments, it would include our council on aging, our human services departments, our library, of course, our town hall staff. And what it excludes are the school assessments, because they can be voted by two-thirds vote, so we don't have 100% control. It excludes insurance, because that's an assessment, and Essex County Retirement is also an assessment that we don't have control over. So 2016, the trash budget inside the town budget represented around 11% of that discretionary spending, and has now risen to quite, almost 20% of that discretionary spending. And what that tells me and our people that are involved in the budget process is that we are reducing funding to our town services to redirect to the trash. And that's why many towns have found ways to try to move all or part of that budget outside their town budget, to protect it from the price fluctuations that are connected to tonnage and recycling market conditions. So there's a lot to this, a lot of reasons why it's a good time to change this contract, to make sure that we're getting something that fits our town well, and that will last, you know, so the next board is, the Select Board has a contract that they can live with, and hopefully the townspeople have a service that is reliable, that we have some clauses in there to protect the services. When, when things don't happen as they should under contract, what would be the recourse? We don't have that right now. So we're going to hopefully be able to put together a package that will improve the services to us while also protecting the town budget and keeping pace with a change in industry. So that's, that's kind of in a nutshell. But I think if you can possibly come to the meeting, I think there'll be just a lot, a wealth of information there, and I can't imagine that there'll be any question that one of the experts there will not be able to answer. So it's on the 13th, which is a Thursday night at 6:30 PM, right here, right? Okay. And so we'll move on. Next on our agenda, we have such a long agenda today. Oh, the 46 Washington Street Building. Okay, this is a continued discussion from February 18th. I think if you looked in your packets, I gave you page numbers, pages, what I saw, 13 to 22 of our packet include the doc.
What happened to number three?
Did I skip number three on our agenda?
Yes.
Oh, 150, I'm sorry. Very good, thank you. Let's go to 150 Center Street, I apologize. That's on pages eight through 12 of our packet, and our town administrator is going to give us an update about the request for expression of interest in this property.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So if you remember, we applied for a community one-stop grant for a feasibility study for 150 Center. We were successful. We had a consultant come in. The consultant was, name just flew right out of my head. It was in, niche engineering that we worked with, and they had presented to the board last year with some of their findings and some of their concepts that they've developed, as well as a market analysis that was performed by RKG, and a zoning analysis that was performed by Innis Associates. So building off of that momentum, we then applied for another community one-stop grant for a request for expression of interest, which is an REI. And what this process will do is it will create a solicitation for potential vendors to come forward with a plan for what they would like to do with the property based upon the information that we've already assembled, part of the feasibility study. So we'll go out on the central register as the procurement process identifies, and it will reach many different companies throughout the state. So once they receive this information, they will then be able to submit information that is then reviewed by the consultant, and then a final report is put together for the town to review. The next step after that is to then apply for a request for proposals, where we'll then take that information, and we'll actually solicit for the actual construction of such, if in fact that's the direction that the town would like to go in. So as part of the REI process, we have been working with Innis Associates in mass development. And the first phase is for them to assemble the document that will go out to bid. So in order to do this, they have requested that we form a working group, so a small working group. So what we are going to do is that the Economic Development Committee, who has taken an interest in trying to identify economic development potential as well as revenue for the community, they will be the first stop for the community involvement to release the initial information about the plan. Then we will have a working group that will be made up of a member from the Economic Development Committee, the planning board, as well as the Select Board. And they will get to view the actual document that's assembled, and so they will provide input and commentary on that document. Once the document is then sent out and they receive the proposals, what will then happen is that we will then use the Economic Development Committee, again, to release those findings and present those findings, and to have an in-depth conversation with the consultant about what that means and what next steps are. So we are looking tonight to see if there would, there would be a nomination by this board to select a member to participate as part of the working group, and that individual can also report their findings back to the Select Board.
Great, thank you. Yes, I, I was thinking about this a lot, and I was trying to think about, not to put pressure on anybody, but we have a couple of members that I don't think are currently active in any committee, and if Mark or Becca had an interest, I would, I'd like to see all of us doing things so that we're all keeping up with things. Are either of you interested?
I don't know if I'll be here much longer.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Well.
Come out to May, so.
Beck, would you, would you be interested? I just think it's, it's good to, you know, jump in on little things, and this, this, again, it's not a little thing, but it, I don't think it's an overwhelming amount of meetings. And I'm assuming if the planning board's involved, they will have to be in the evening when people can get to them, right?
Yes. So the working group won't necessarily need to attend meetings. They will need to review the documents and provide input on the documents, and then that will be reviewed in a public setting by the Economic Development Committee.
Okay.
And those meetings are in the evening.
Okay. Jason, do you have any comments or preferences?
No, I think if Becky's interested in it. I know that I've sat in on some meetings with Senator Tarr and Secretary of Housing.
Yeah.
And we've spoken about 150 Center Street.
Yeah.
So I'm more than willing to get that information with Becky, and.
Yeah. You sure you don't want to be on another board, Jason?
Yeah, it's okay.
Okay, just want to make sure.
And Ed, do you?
No, I don't have any comments.
Comments, okay. I mean, for, for folks that may be newer to town, that don't know what this is all about, we have about, we purchased, was it 60 acres?
Yes.
60 acres on Center Street, formerly referred to as The Pits, and hopefully someday to be referred to by a nicer name and look a little better. But it's vacant property, it does border up on our wells, so there was a lot of sentiment, even though the price was a little high, that we wanted to purchase this land because our wells are there. And now, given the value of land in Groveland, I think it's, I think it's been, it's well worth it to have this land. It's, you know, it's gonna be good for the town. So this would, if this moved forward, we would actually receive some revenue from this project.
Correct, if that's the direction that the town would like to go in. And that would require a town meeting vote. So it is something that the voters would have an opportunity to weigh in on.
Okay. And so the timeline that's in here is, that's for December 24 to May 25, right?
So the REI process will end June 30, 2026, excuse me, 2025, per the grant agreement. So this process, the initial RER process, REI process, will end this fiscal year.
Okay. And then we figure out what to do from there?
Correct. We have an application drafted to move forward with the RFP process, so that people can see exactly what that looks like based upon the feedback that we were, we received from the REI process. But we have not yet applied, because that funding is obviously contingent upon whether or not we move forward with the MBTA 3A zoning.
Oh, yeah, obviously, yes. Okay, so we need just a motion and a second to place Becky on this. Does it have a name, this task group, a working group?
Just the REI Working Group for 150 Center.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to nominate Becky for the REI Working Group.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? There being none, call for the vote. It's unanimous? You have to say, you can vote for yourself.
Can I? Okay.
Well, that's unanimous. Thank you. Unanimous, okay. So we'll move on to our next agenda, which will be the 46 Washington Street, am I right?
Yes.
I just jumped the agenda. So, okay. Okay, so we're on to, yes, 46 Washington Street. We've had continued discussions on this, and you have information in your packet, I think, I think it's what everybody asked for. You can see the operating costs for this building. I thought, I'm trying to do it from the back of my head, was it like $3,000 for last year, or was it more like six? What was the utilities last year? I don't remember the number.
I pulled up the wrong packet.
Page 16.
So it looks like.
I know, right? We go to our pa, I, I, it's a wise thing, the page numbering, because it's like so difficult to find this, yeah. Okay.
So for the operation costs?
Yeah, oh, I see it, I see the table.
For fiscal year, for fiscal year '24, for utilities was about $3,686, and then the insurance was about $2,567, for a total of $6,253.
Right. So, so it costs a little bit, and the insurance knows it's vacant, so that's the low-ball cost?
It is vacant insurance, correct. Oh, excuse me, vacant property insurance.
Okay. And the utilities that we have on, do they have to be kept on, or could we winterize it?
So we do need to keep the heat on. We've been advised to keep the heat on.
Okay.
The water is on, however, it's not being utilized, and essentially, the water and sewer department is doing us a favor, because as you all know with your own bills, you are charged a minimum to have the water available.
Oh, yes.
And they are not charging the town that minimum, because they're, we, they would need to shut off the water to the site. And since they know that the property is vacant, they are not charging us that fee.
Okay.
That's not why the heat is on.
That's correct.
The heat is on primarily because the mortar foundation will continue to expand and contract with the freezing.
Yeah.
And deteriorate at a much faster rate. So with the heat being on at 50 degrees, it keeps it much steadier, and it'll, it'll help preserve the building for a much longer period of time.
Okay, that's good. I, myself, when I look through the different items, the one that caught my eye was the, see if I'm gonna find it right, it was the mass development, which deals with underutilized public buildings, grants that are available, is it, am I right about that? The mass development grants?
Mm-hmm.
Have to do with what we're sitting on right now, a town building that hasn't been in use since, basically, the pandemic, a little before the pandemic. So it hasn't been that many years, but it would be nice to figure out what is the best use of this property. So, I mean, my personal feeling is we should, the Select Board should consider saying, yes, let's see if we can get a mass development grant. We already know that, well, we're not positive, but the CPC was looking at doing a contamination study, which I think is a worthwhile endeavor. If for some reason that can't be done through CPC, maybe that could be done through mass development.
There are monies available for Brown's field sites. This doesn't technically qualify, but there could be some ways around that.
Okay.
But one of the things about moving forward with a mass development, if we do decide to move forward with the RFP process for 150 Center, we could combine this application. And due to the proximity, I think that we would find a more likelihood of being funded.
Oh, okay. Okay. Do you need us to vote on that, or do you want to look into things and let us know what's available?
It's entirely up to the board. I mean, the, the feasibility study is a viable option, and as you can see in the memo, there's ways to combine that with more of the same that we're doing for 150 Centers, such as an REI and an RFP process. And that does involve public engagement, and, and that is something that's also noted in the memo. It does increase the cost, but obviously, it's something that's, it adds productivity to the actual conversation, so something I would advise that we, we move forward with. But we could do something to combine various different options through the mass development grant in combination with 150 Center Street and an RFP. And I think that, again, that would be looked upon favorably by the state, just given some of the movement and some of the work that we've already completed in the area.
So is, is anybody ready to decide on this, or do you want more time? We've been talking about this for several meetings, and I know this has come up now for several years, what to do about this property. It is the last mill building, which gives it historic significance, but to figure out what can be done with it, I think is, is important. What are our options, and how much would it cost to get this building to a usable status? You know, maybe it wouldn't be too bad, but maybe it would be more than the town It is the last mill building, which gives it historic significance, but to figure out what can be done with it, I think is important. What are our options, and how much would it cost to get this building to a usable status? You know, maybe it wouldn't be too bad, but maybe it would be more than the town is willing to invest in it, right? Which would lead us in different directions then. So, if we did, so, what kind of a, I mean, I'm in favor of moving forward on things that will help us figure it out, public engagement, or public surveys, or anything like that, sure. But I think a lot of people would want to know first more about the building itself, and what feasible, what's feasible with it? What can we do with it, and how much is it, how much might it cost? Right? I mean, don't you think that's, I mean, obviously, you felt that putting too much money into it might not be the best idea?
Right, I mean, I-
Yeah, I know.
Looking at the building, I mean, I really stick by what I said. I think it's going to cost way too much. I don't think we have the capacity to have any type of return on our investment. It's a small plot of land compared to the six-plus acres that sits right next to it. That has access to 150 Center Street because it butts up against it. This little lot does not. So, I just, I just don't think it's, I think it's been a drain on the, especially with the budgets getting tighter and tighter and tighter. I mean, you can see over, since twenty twenty-three, that's thirty-five thousand dollars, it's just, we can't recoup any of that because we can't even use the building.
Yes, I understand. But are you opposed to finding grant funding to just look into the feasibility of this building and whether or not it's, has some value to the community through some meetings? And, I mean, I wouldn't go into-
Me personally, yeah, because I just, I just don't see it. It's just, it's being beyond that, and we've been sitting on the building for such a long time, and it's just deteriorating.
Well, we haven't sat on it, I mean, it's only been since, literally, since Water and Sewer moved out. That building was utilized first by the Highway Department and then by the Water and Sewer Department. So, it served a purpose. It hasn't, it's never been a building-
Where they packed the trucks, and, I mean, it was really never a great working area.
No, but-
I don't even consider it safe to be inside the building.
Well, they worked in it. And it was used and useful, and it does sit in the middle of a very highly populated area. So, that's, before I would just say, let's unload it on the market and get our top dollar. I would like to see some ideas on what it could be used for that might be beneficial. And if, if the cost of bringing it up to the level where it could be used supersedes the cost of any use, then we'll deal with that. But I don't see it as a piece of land that we'd want to just sell off right now. Once it's gone, it's gone, someone will just knock it down and build, build something on it. That's what'll happen, it'll be gone. And that would be, that's what's happened to all the mill buildings. And I mean, you know, maybe someone would say, well, you didn't take care of them, that's what happens. Well, we've taken care of everything as best we can in Groveland. And I mean, if you look at the pictures on the inside, I mean, you could see the Water and Sewer and the Highway and their time. They all did some work inside there to try and, try and keep it usable. It's not, you know, it's not awful on the eyes, it's just a matter of what does it need to be used for something? It's not beautiful, but it might be something that could be very useful at some point. Yes, Ed?
As I said before, this is the last building of historic significance in the town. Anybody that's lived in town a number of years remembers it. I don't think it should be torn down, I think it should be preserved in some way. And, like, it can always be used for something, and we just have to decide what do we want to use it for? And it, you know, once it gets torn down, it's lost forever, and it shouldn't be. I know a lot of people that have moved into town in the last few years, or the last great many years, they have, they don't care because it means nothing to them where it does for people that have lived in Groveland for a long time. It has historic significance for them, they remember different things it was used for, and I think in some way, it should be, it should be preserved, maybe in steps, I don't know. But the first thing I think that need to decide is, what do we want to use the building for? And it's, you know, once it gets torn down or sold, you're not going to get it back. So, you know, it's a piece of town-owned property, it should be preserved, and not tear it down, not sell it. The town can use it for something, whether it's recreation, whatever. It, I think it's important to preserve the building.
I'm on the fence kind of both ways here, because I agree with Jason, because-
You worked in it.
But I just, I don't think it's, I want to, I would like to explore some options just to see, but if it doesn't make sense to, you know, dump a couple hundreds of thousands into it to get, you know, rental money, or, you know, five hundred bucks a month, or whatever, like, I don't want it to be a burden on us for, you know, just, I'm not saying we should tear it down, but, I mean, if we were to sell it, could we sell it to somebody with, you know, like, an agreement to not change the looks of it? Then everybody has their mill building? You know, I mean-
What are they going to do? Okay, so we keep circling back to what can it be used for as a primary thing, and how much would it cost? So, is that some, something that we can move forward on?
A hundred percent, and like you'll see in the memo that I detailed out for you, there's a lot of different options that you can move forward with, and there's a lot of different legal agreements that you can put in place to make sure that even if you did want to sell, and even if you didn't, there could be stipulations that would involve keeping the building, keeping the character of the building. And it could also include provisions which would allow certain spaces to be used for community spaces, or there should be public access and shared facilities and community-focused programming, depending on what the building is utilized for. So, it does give us a whole host of things that we can choose from that would be in the best interest of the community, not necessarily demolishing the building. And that can all be betted out through the Mass Development Process with the feasibility study, the market analysis, to figure out exactly what would even thrive there, and have that one-on-one conversation with the public to figure out exactly what they would like to see as they will ultimately be the ones voting if we were to sell, lease, and/or keep the building for a specific said purpose.
So, the next step would be to say that the board is, would like to go forward with this feasibility study at this point, and see if we can get grant funding for it so that we don't have to use town funds, and that could go forward, and that would involve public meetings where people could come forward and talk about what they could envision in their, you know, in the use of that. Yes, I would like to see that. I don't, I don't know, I have a sentimental attachment to that old brick thing. It's not in great shape, but it's not in horrific shape either. I mean, we did clean up the outside of it. I mean, at some point, if it were kept and it were preserved, maybe the history of some of the mill buildings could be a mural on the side of it. I don't know, but I wouldn't want it to be something that was so costly that people were like, why'd we waste our money? I would like the public, some kind of a public input onto that, make sure that we're doing-
Yeah.
Yeah, I had a comment, though, just with the Community Preservation Committee. A project was put forth to try to make this into, you know, put it under the Historical Society. I know there was some discussion about art studios, so I know there's an idea out there. So, I'm on the fence because agreeing to this is just really saying, I'm sorry, we're not going to do, we won't indulge that project.
Well, it's not that we won't. I personally, my take on this and looking into it and thinking about it, this is a publicly owned building. I don't feel that we have the authority to enter into a private lease with anybody without some kind of public engagement and publicity about this building. It has, it has to be put out in the open, and it has to be public. And yes, maybe there'll be only, you know, one or two people that really have any use for it, and maybe there will be an art studio, and maybe they'll open the garage door up on a nice day, and you can go and see what they're doing, and that would be very cool. That may very well be what it is. It's not to say, it's not, it's just, I think, we have to follow the process of the public input and bringing it out into the open more as a, as a building that we're looking at, whether to preserve or not to preserve is the question. And I know the Historic Society really wants us to preserve, and I take that very seriously, that it is the last mill building, and this is it. All the others were torn down. Other towns have flipped mill buildings into restaurants and houses. And Groveland, we knocked them down, I guess. That's what we do, we're good at that. But lately, we've been doing better at preserving, and I think part of the credit goes to our historians who are always watching over and saying, hey, that has historical significance. So, I think the feasibility study would be a great step.
And it doesn't prohibit us from not looking forward to some of the arts desires that have been put forward and have been discussed as part of the Comprehensive Master Plan, et cetera. I mean, in the first part of the document that was provided to you all, it says that RKG has had recent related arts data for another community that they're working in. So, they should be able to pull from that data as well as the CPC monies that are invested at the Lucille's Cottage effort, where we had a consultant come in and provide some additional information in regards to art studios and the need and the poll that we would have based upon the location. So, I don't think that that doesn't have to be part of the conversation in writing the grant, too. We could phrase it that there has been interest to create art studio or artist space as part of this building, so we would like that to be taken into consideration. So, it doesn't prohibit us from exploring that as an option, but it'll at least give us data that will say whether or not that's even feasible for us to move forward. So, we can make that a part of the application, for sure.
Okay, and so this could move forward even while the CPC does whatever they're going to do?
Correct.
Okay, I mean, I think that, do we need, can we do a vote on it? Yes, Ed?
If I, if I got it straight-
Yep.
Rebecca, you're looking for, you move ahead with the feasibility study first?
So, yes, the feasibility study and the market analysis would be grouped together, for sure.
We get a motion to approve that part so we can get something going? I think that a lot of, you know, other people have done work on this project, we have to step-
I'll make a motion, we move, request to move forward with a market analysis and a feasibility study. And I think that, I think that's basically what the CPC committee were looking for, is some kind of a direction on this.
Okay, a second. Mark seconded it, any further discussion?
Yeah, I'm just curious, the cost of that, both of that?
Both of?
The REI and the-
So, we put together some ranges because we haven't engaged with a consultant yet, but for a RFP process with interview and selection, you're looking at twenty-five thousand to thirty thousand dollars. And for an REI, the estimated cost is about fifteen thousand to twenty thousand dollars. And then, again, for the feasibility study, you're looking at ten to fifteen. If you wanted to do additional public meetings, like the board was discussing, then you're probably going to look to see about twenty thousand dollars for that task, and then a market analysis can range from twenty to thirty. But again, given some of the consultants' experience with Groveland and some of the data that they've already collected, there could be some relevant cost savings there. And we could proceed with also looking at an REI and an RFP as well. If you look at the bottom of the memo, the combined project would look to be about eighty thousand dollars. But you could potentially look to see if you could get all of that completed. But again, due to timing, as well as public engagement, and wanting to make sure that the Community Preservation Committee is involved as well, you might want to stick first to, as Selectman Watson was saying, the feasibility and market analysis to get a better picture of what you're looking to put forward.
But to be clear, what we're looking at is pursuing mass development funding, which grants typically cover costs related to market analysis, feasibility, and early-stage planning. So, we're looking for grants, we're not looking for the budget to do this. We should be eligible on several levels, just because it's a historic building, proximity to the cleanup site, maybe, and it's also in a heavily populated area where there isn't many opportunities for recreation and other types of things.
We did apply for an underutilized property grant through Mass Development for this site originally, back in two thousand, I think it was two thousand twenty-one, but we were not successful. But again, I do think that based upon the momentum that we've experienced with 150 Center, and while not an adjacent property specifically to the site in question, it does abut the property and a lot of the conservation-restricted land that abuts 150 Center. So, I do think that that will provide a little bit of an edge with our application that we can work with. So, I do think maybe taking another bite at the apple will bring us closer than we were last time, which was just this one building and nothing else, which I don't think was as attractive enough for Mass Development to really want to fund a project of that nature.
Does the MBTA Communities Act connect to this?
It is tied to that, so if that does not pass, then we would not be eligible to apply. And that's why the other funding sources that I put down as part of the memo was the Community Preservation Committee. There is funding for housing, so if you were looking to try and convert that into a housing development, you could still move forward with funding to try and figure out what that would look like. And that also has different cost eligible, excuse me, eligible costs, such as a market analysis, feasibility study, public engagement, if it's centered around housing and the creation of affordable housing. And then there's additional funding opportunities through the Massachusetts State Historic Preservation Office. But again, that would most likely probably be tied to the MBTA three A zoning as well, unfortunately. Anything that's on the state and discretionary is really up for, up for grab.
Yep, I just want to make those points clear, because I think that's important for the decision process at town meeting.
Right.
Because the housing that would go there would have to be affordable, it would have to fall basically under the forty B because right now, it's zoned as business, so we don't allow housing in our business section.
It is business, yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to go ahead and try to find the grants to begin the process of the, and you made the motion to feasibility and market research the beginning stages of this, correct?
My motion didn't include anything on the grants, it just included recommending a market analysis and a feasibility study.
Okay, we would need money for that, so it would be, everybody's, you know, okay with us trying to get, pursue grants for it? I think it's be there amend the motion to include that, or have it just be understood, because I, I wouldn't want people to think that-
I'll make a friendly amendment to seek the funds to achieve Ed's motion by grants.
Yes, okay, all right. Are we ready to vote?
I just, and that won't halt the, what's going on with the project now, right, that they have on the environmental analysis? They can still move forward with-
The contamination?
Currently, it's still up to the CPC. They haven't yet decided.
Okay.
Just don't want to derail anything, that's all.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Point of water?
Oh, yes.
A friendly amendment is made, it-
Oh, would you like to accept it?
The person that made the motion to accept it, and you never asked.
I am asking now.
Sure, you can move forward with that, I'll agree to that.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor? And opposed? Okay, four in favor, one opposed, it passes. Okay, and next on our agenda, our mile-long agenda, I believe, is Shanahan Field, the house rental, not the field house. Again, when I first read this, I thought, what? We're building a field house? No, we're not. We have a Shanahan Field, and we have a home the Historic Society owns, and there is a rental down there. So, we were provided mainly information purposes, am I correct?
So, correct. At the last meeting during the town administrative time, I had informed the board that it was brought to our attention that we do not have any lease agreement for the current property. So, there's a lot of misunderstanding as to who owns what and who's responsible for such. And so, as part of the due diligence process, I consulted town council, and they advised that we move forward with a ground lease to make sure that the town is protected, as well as the Historic Society, from renting the property as they are. So, at the last meeting, I said I was going to work with town council to come up with a draft document for the board to review, so that you could take a look at. If it makes sense to you, we can move forward, and then we can engage with the Historic Society and have a conversation. But I did not want to start to engage with the Historic Society if it was not something that the select board wanted to move forward with. So, tonight, it really is just to share the draft document with you so you can take a look and then advise how you would like to proceed and if you would like to proceed. And again, the document before you, there's only one red highlight. We're still not sure exactly how to tie the lease to, this lease to the rental agreement. Right now, we say that it would run coterminous with the current rental agreement, but since the current rental agreement with the owner is month-to-month, that doesn't really give the town much flexibility. So the conversation I've been having with town council is trying to figure out what language would be best in that particular situation, so that the town doesn't lose its rights to figure out when and if they decide to change that. And it, again, is in fairness to the Leesee, because then they would be given enough time to make sure that they can figure out what they're going to do next as well. So it really is a protection for both. But other than that, it's pretty much a final document, but welcome to amendments, comments. And again, it's up to the board as to whether or not you would like to move forward. But it is strongly advised that we do something of this nature, since there is nothing protecting the town currently, and a tax bill is being produced on tax-exempt land. And so having that delineated would be very important for us.
Okay, yeah, so when I read it, I noted that you delineated the driveway and the yard and the space around the house, which is, I'm sorry. My son calls every night at the time, every night at the time, he's like, one second, I can't find it. I went to my coat, of course. One more pause. This is his time. And he knows I'm... I'm just trying to be down to some... Now, sorry about that. Yeah, so I personally think it's a good idea, because you never know, people. This board change is over. Somebody else comes in, doesn't want anything anywhere. This is a house that's been there since Dr. Dark built his new office, if I remember right. Right, wasn't this his old office? Yes, okay, so when I first came to town, we went to the older Mr. Dark in the small office. And then that building was put on a flatbed and driven down Gardner Street and put down on the soccer parking lot. You know, a time when there wasn't really much going on around down there. But now, things have gotten a lot busier. I think it's a good idea to make sure that there's a clear delineation of parking for that house and space, so that people aren't, you know, driving up to use the bathroom or something, which I've heard has happened. And so I think this is a good idea. I don't know if it's ready for us yet, or does anybody have any concern about this? Just kinda clarifies everything.
And it also brings it into compliance, because the original approval in 1991 did not state that this would be a rental housing unit. The original approval to place the building back in 1991 was specifically for use as a museum.
Yes, and now the museum has been moved up to Washington Hall, right?
Yeah.
Do you need, do you wanna vote from the board tonight on the draft, or do you want us to wait?
I think we should wait until we get that final bit.
Okay.
The lease agreement itself, I think, is really important, just because of the change in time in terms of liability. And in order to protect the town, which I think is a big part of what we need to do on a regular basis, is something that we have to consider. So I think the lease agreement is a great idea, and I think it's, especially since it's recommended by our town attorney to protect the town, is important. But I think they have to work out that last bit before we can really vote on it.
Okay, so that can be worked out and brought forward to our next meeting? Okay, well, then, does anyone have any other concerns on this? 'Cause this would be the time, yes?
Yes, if you look at the property down there, whoever designed the driveway to that property did a horrible job. It's really not accessible the way it is. And before they move any further with the parking lot for the soccer field, there should be, something should be done to straighten out that driveway. It's really, it's really not adequate the way it is set up. It would be impossible to plow it the way it is. And I don't know who's designed it, but it wasn't done correctly. And somebody should look at it and straighten it out. Or maybe we could look, before that's done, maybe you could look and get somebody to fix that driveway. If the town, if it's on town property like that, it's gotta have better access to the driveway. And I would even recommend a little wider than what it is. Just take a look at it. You can't plow out into the street with that. If you're plowing up against, you're plowing in, you're gonna be plowing up against the building, and then the person's not gonna be able to get their car out at that 90-degree angle, especially if they push the snow up all the way in. So something needs to be done, maybe even make it like a circular, where they come in one side and out the other. But something better than, better than what's done. Looks like it was designed out of the Bagnell School.
I guess what I would say is that, you know, it's not on the town's responsibility to create driveways for people. But I think that if someone from our highway or project department wanted to take a look at the width and make sure it's the appropriate width. But I mean, just like anybody with a short driveway, you gotta move the snow where you gotta move the snow. I mean, when they plow, everybody plows right up against our garage, you gotta move the snow out of the garage door. What am I gonna do? You know, it is what it is, I don't have a circular driveway. Most people don't.
Having driven a plow, you typically, you drive in over the snow, you drop your plow at the end, and you drag some of the snow out.
As best you can.
Yeah, and then you pull the car out, and you push the snow into the 90-degree corner, 'cause that's what it's there for, and they pull in straight. It's a pretty standard driveway, I mean, it was done by engineers, it was designed by the people that designed the parking lot. So I think the driveway is more than adequate.
Well, they oughta go back to engineering school, because it's not done right. And if you're removing, you can't, you can't plow the snow out into the driveway, out into the street. And that's, so if you're backdragging, that's what's gonna happen. And it's not right.
I'm just, I'm confused by it, because I mean, a driveway is a driveway, and there's a lot of people with short, straight driveways, and you just have to push the snow not into the road. This part I understand.
What you don't understand is...
No, I don't understand.
The driveway's on town property, it's a town building.
But we're now... It's not a town responsibility of the driveway, I don't think. I mean, I think that they did a fairly good job putting in a yard kind of frontage there and everything that, given that it is town land. But I think at some point, we have to say, okay, it's usable. So I guess if, Ed, if you want the highway department, or Arthur, or somebody to go down there and look at it and say whether or not it's an appropriately width-designed driveway, I'm willing to listen to an expert on it, but, I mean, driveway's a driveway. You can't plow your driveway out into the road, that's the same for everybody in town.
What if they shovel?
Shovel? What?
Do I hear a volunteer?
I'm just saying, I mean, not everybody plows, some people use snow blowers, some people shovel.
They shovel snow?
So the driveway currently, it lands at the house, right? It's not beside the house, it goes right in front of the house, is that...
Correct.
The issue, okay.
Yeah.
So if you were to move it beside it, would that change the 301-foot perimeter surrounding the building? That would change...
So we would have to take a closer look at it. I know that when they designed the house, because I mean, technically, it wasn't really put anywhere strategic. It was just dropped in the middle of the property. And so I know that we had originally had conversations about removing the building from the site and putting it in a more appropriate place. And that wasn't something that the Historic Society and the CPC wanted to explore at that point in time, so the proposal was dropped. We did have the plans drawn, we did vet them through a public process, including this committee right here. As part of such, the driveway, and the idea was to mimic what's around the surrounding area. So if you go out there, you'll see that the, right next to River's Edge, the three houses all along there have the same exact driveway, if not shorter, without the little parking space that's to the side, which actually gives more area. And then in addition to that, we wanted to, again, prohibit one of the largest complaints that we had, which is that people would just park in this woman's driveway and walk into her house during games, thinking it was either a snack shack or a bathroom or something like that, where, you know, the resident will tell you many occasions where that actually was the case. So the idea was to mimic the surrounding area, so that people would clearly see it as another driveway. I can take another look at it closely with Arthur Marcos, the Projects and Programs Manager, and I can also reach out to T C, who's the engineer, and to figure out if there's additional and/or any work that can be done in order to improve the particular area. But again, it wasn't strategic in that, you know, placement. So we worked with what we had to try and make the best for the community as a whole, and not just one particular person.
I understand, I was just kinda going back to the document we were looking at. That decision would put this part on hold, 'cause it would potentially change that.
Okay, so are we okay with waiting for the final lease to come forward, then? With the one thing that Arthur will perhaps take a look at it and give us some feedback on it in terms of how that driveway is in the neighborhood and whether or not he feels it will...
And I would like the opportunity to work with the Historic Society and have them weigh in on the lease before making it final as well, to make sure that there's nothing that they would like to add or have any concerns about, so that we can get that all squared away prior to giving the final lease to the select board to sign, and then back to the Historic Society to sign as well.
Okay. Are we good with this? Okay, so next on our agenda is our Valley Screw Building, which is the site of the Superfund cleanup. Did you want, I know you gave a really, you wrote a really nice little history of that at the beginning. Did you wanna share that? A lot of people that are new to town don't know why this thing is what it is, and I think it's important to keep people informed on it.
So essentially, if you recall, we had been taking a closer look at this particular property and whether or not we could foreclose on the property, which would alleviate a lot of the problems that we've been experiencing. Specifically, the property owner is negligent in taking care of the property. They are not current in their taxes, which impacts our overlay, which means that we have monies collected that we cannot use for the operation of government, and it is a larger sum of money. And obviously, with the budgetary information you received in your packet, any bit helps, so it is sad to see that that has to sit there. So as part of that process, we've been taking a closer look, because we do know that there's liens on the property that are held by both the Environmental Protection Agency, the EPA, as well as Mass D E P. So in doing so, we had reached out and had a conversation with them about potentially what we could do with the site and how we could move forward, and whether or not they would be willing to forgive the liens. So that led to the memo that's in your packet this evening. So as the chair had said, there was a drinking water issue back in 1979, when the current, or that particular property owner, which goes by the name or as that we know, Valley Screw, had leaked some contaminants into the soil, trichlorophylene, T C E, which contaminated Groveland's well number one and two. So in 1999, the Environmental Protection Agency came in and oversaw the cleanup of the site. So they actually constructed a brick building that's on the Archdiocese land behind the Valley Screw Building, which you can probably see from the site. And they accessed the site at, excuse me, 64 Washington Street to get back to there. So they used that water treatment facility to clean up the groundwater and continue to remediate the situation. So between 2000 and 2011, the EPA removed more than 1,130 pounds of volatile organic compounds and treated over 4 million gallons of contaminated water. So the EPA worked hard to address the situation, and in 2012, 2013, they started to develop an exit strategy as they felt as though they had cleaned up the site effectively. So in 2020, the Mass D E P auctioned the groundwater treatment equipment and hired a contractor to decommission the cleanup facility. So the brick building that you see in the back has nothing in it. And in 2022, under the original 1999 consent order, the EPA transferred and decommissioned the empty brick building and gave that to the Archdiocese of Boston, because that is, in fact, on their property. In 2023, we had worked diligently, specifically Mike Dempsey and myself, trying to work with them to see whether or not we could potentially buy or work with them to get ahold of that particular building. A lot of different uses were brought forward, potentially at that point in time. We talked about the need to comply with PFAS regulations. Maybe we could reuse it as a drinking water, excuse me, a treatment facility. That didn't seem to be a fruitful effort. We talked about different alternative uses, whether it be housing, recreation, mixed-use, arts, cultural. So we continued to work and identify what could potentially be used for. Despite our efforts, the Archdiocese decided to list the building for sale and decided that they would go with the highest bidder. Obviously, as a town entity, we are not allowed to spend any more than what the property is appraised at. So it was not something that we could compete with. Again, that being the case, we also saw struggles with access to the property in the back. There doesn't seem to be a clear delineation of access to the brick building. So that brings up the topic of Valley Screw, again, as an access point for that building, in addition to the fact that the building continues to deteriorate and the roof continues to collapse in on itself, and it continues to be both a public safety and just a hazard in general. So in reaching out to Mass D E P and EPA about potentially forgiving the liens, they had proposed some conditions that they would be willing to do so. And those are listed in the memo that was provided to you. Most notably was the environmental site assessment, the process of acquiring the property, which would be at the expense of the town, the building demolition, which, again, would be at the cost of the town, and then potential future proceeds from the sale. So I had assembled a response to that, those conditions. It took a little longer than we had hoped for, but we also engaged in a consultant that we utilized through the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, the MBPC, our regional planning agency. And he was able to help us get a little bit more details in terms of the more finite costs that would be associated with some of those items, because the idea was that we didn't just wanna go back to the EPA and D E P and say, well, we just can't do this, this is way too expensive. We actually wanted to have a more productive dialogue, where we could actually say, listen, like, this is gonna cost us X amount of money. You know, we're already taking on a huge amount of risk and a huge amount of liability, so, you know, can we kinda discuss this a little further? And that's what you'll see in the remainder of the memo. So you'll see the cost of the environmental site assessment, and still, there's some unknowns with the building. Nobody has been in the building for quite some time now. So there hasn't been a discussion as to, or there hasn't been a clear definition or a clear answer as to whether or not there's any contaminants in the building. A lot have said that, you know, they had done the heat radar type of treatment, being the EPA, and cleaned underneath the building. So that is why they didn't take the building down, because there was no contamination that was in the building. But that doesn't take into consideration asbestos, mold, you know, all the other environmental factors, and just the fact that that building's been exposed to the elements without a roof for X amount of years. So you don't really know what's inside there, what's living in there, what kinda, you know, has kind of developed over time. So that does lead to, you know, the question as to hazardous building materials. And since no survey was done, that could increase the cost of the demolition of the building. But that's what the environmental assessment would help identify. And then, again, the financial burden of the demolition and not really knowing what hazardous materials are in the building, it's putting us at an estimated cost of about $1.4 million. And you'll see in your packet the breakdown that the consultant had provided. Then, obviously, as we just discussed, the ongoing financial risk that the town has with the site as well. It is a Superfund site, and just the profit-sharing requirement, just making it known that it really is not something that the town feels is fair and equitable, given the impact that this has had on the property. The property owner and their inability to move forward and do the right thing has come at the expense of Groveland, and we've already been feeling that burden for quite some time. So if the EPA felt as though the building was a concern, then they should have taken down the building. And if they do not feel as though it's a concern, we're asking them to potentially consider removing it from the Superfund site, declaring it as a Brownsfield. If they do declare the building as a Brownsfield site, that does limit, excuse me, that does increase our... me, that does increase our ability to apply for federal and state funding, uh, to help with the demolition of the building itself, which would not come at a direct expense to the Groveland taxpayers specifically. Um, so we are having that conversation with them based upon some feedback we've had with the consultant. So we haven't made any decisions. Nothing's been done. It's just been a lot of conversing with both Mass DEP and the EPA and just kind of trying to make sure that we're all of the understanding that we just want to be done with this. Um, we've talked about potentially if we were to foreclose on the site and maybe not sell the property. Maybe we cap the site and we create another recreation field that could tie into 46 Washington and with the Archdiocese. Um, so there's a lot of different potential that we could utilize the property for. I know I've had a couple of residents call because I actually just put an update in the newsletter that I released for February, and they said, well, you can't do anything with the site. It's completely restricted. And there is an AUL on the site that does restrict what you can potentially do with the site, but it's more geared towards digging and the disturbance of the soil. So, and also residential use and groundwater wells and again, things dealing with digging into the, to the ground. So there are other opportunities available for us to reuse the property, um, and/or we could potentially again sell the property if that's something that the town wanted to do. Um, so it's not just, oh, it's contaminated, there's no, there's no future, there's no hope. Um, there, there just comes with some more restrictions that we need to take into consideration before moving forward. So I'm scheduled to try and meet with all of the parties, um, in the next few weeks. So hopefully I will have a better update for the board, but because this has kind of grown and we're starting to see a little bit of progress in the conversations that we're having, um, I did want to make sure that the board was aware, um, of these conversations and that I kept you updated.
Go ahead, Jason.
And we've also been, uh, working with Senator Tarr, Seth Moulton, and the Secretary of Housing, um, trying to get their leverage with the EPA and the DEP.
Correct.
I have a question. So I know that, um, when this happened, two wells were closed down, and one well has remained unusable. But the other well was contaminated and that's now considered usable and we're using it.
I believe, based upon my recollection, only one well, um, had to be abandoned, but the other well was able to be saved and reutilized.
And I guess, these are the rumors you hear over all the years when you've lived in this town longer than 20 years, that the owner, why is the owner allowed to just walk away? I don't understand that. I haven't seen a single document that says why this person should even have any ownership of this property at all. Why, why haven't the assets of the owner been seized and that in, it just, something doesn't seem right because then I feel like, okay, um, if I was having a really bad luck day on one of those really nice windy storm days driving past that and a piece of the roof came off and hit my car, and let's say I survive that, okay, so don't get all happy yet, I survive, but my car is damaged. Who's responsible?
So I understand the point, but the issue is it's private property. And so just like we do with any type of property that we own, we would lien the property. So, and then with the lien by the EPA and DEP, they get paid first before the town gets paid. So now the value of the property has severely diminished, so nobody wants it. So essentially, the property owner, until it has, has continued to meet the bare minimum requirements. So as you saw, as soon as the hole started to grow and the walls started to kind of buckle, the building commissioner actually issued an enforcement order which mandated that he had to put in a fence. So he put up a fence, but it's a, a rented fence because he knew that he would need to go through extensive permitting with the state and the EPA if he were to try and dig on the property and put in a permanent fence. So he even called the other day to say, hey, I don't want to keep on paying the rental fee for the fence. And it's like, all right, well, then you need to absorb the cost of actually putting in a, 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 a long-term fence. And the financial burden that that caused him, I can't do that. So, I mean, so he meets the bare, uh, so the owner meets the bare minimum requirements for the building code of, of the site and making sure that the site does not impose an inherent risk upon the surrounding property. And so where the owner, like any private property owner, there's, we, we wouldn't be able to just take the property unless we foreclosed on the property. And if we foreclose on the property, then we are assuming a lot of financial burdens such as even the VAX taxes, the liens, et cetera. So that's why we're trying to, trying to alleviate as much of those financial burdens as we can with giving ourselves a, a Plan B as a pathway forward.
But there is an inherent risk. That building sits within, uh, what, 10 feet of a road that's heavily used. Um, how far from the bus stop and the kids that walk up to that bus stop that walk right by that building, and it's falling apart? I mean, the pieces of that building could eventually end up in the road or in people's houses.
So that's what we're arguing, but it, I, I, again, because we do not own the property, we can't just, I mean, it'd be trespassing to go onto private property. And I know one of the former select board members had mentioned bankruptcy and a different court mechanism in order to get the property. However, the individual does not have any family, so they do not have any recourse. So there is, again, no ability for us to move forward, especially when it's held in a trust. So it becomes far more complicated to try and get the, a private property owner to relinquish their lights to a property. The only legal process we have, which the building commissioner has said to this board before, is imprisonment. So you can try and imprison, uh, an older gentleman and still not own the property. So there's no real, what is, uh...
Uh, what I'm asking more towards is towards the EPA and the others, that we have children walking to the bus stop.
Agreed.
Right by that building. Buses pick children up, drop children off.
Agreed.
Right by that building. Uh, people walk their dogs. It's a, it's a heavily populated neighborhood.
And that is what we're trying to get through to them, is that we need their help in order to make this go away for everyone, including themselves, and it is a public safety issue.
Okay. Because I don't really think the fence is going to do much good if a piece of the roof comes off.
No, I agree.
Okay. It'd be just my luck, it'll be my car. But, but in all seriousness, you know, kidding aside, I think that, um, I think you've done an admirable amount of work, more work, um, yourself, Bill Don, um, Jason and others than has ever been done to kind of move this forward. Um, would it be helpful for a petition from that neighborhood to say, we're worried about this building? We're worried about debris. We're worried about debris that might be contaminated, you know, coming into our house or our yard or whatever. Um, would that be helpful?
I mean, we've kind of relayed that. We've even said that we have concerns about the fact that if you don't know whether or not there's any hazardous building materials, you have a big gaping hole. What happens when it rains? What happens when the, when the wind blows? What, what, what type of, you know, health risks are you putting the surrounding areas in knowing that you did not remove a building that could have additional security issues? So we have been trying to relay that message on behalf of those residents, knowing that there is the potential at any moment for it to turn worse.
But, yeah, but it's private property, so we can't go inside and see anything either.
But it would be beneficial for the residents to speak up.
Okay.
Just like they did at 36 Garrison Street when they spoke to the state. Because that's something that didn't happen and that's something they reflected in the letter they sent back to us. So it's important that they talk to their state reps. It's important that they talk to the DEP and the EPA.
Okay. Okay, so we could, we could get something going in the neighborhood and, and have people say something because it, it just seems like, and I know it seems so hopeless and I'm, I admire the effort that you're all putting into it because most people just threw up their hands and walked away from this years ago. Um, and I just don't know what, what we can do. Um, and it's not just an eyesore, it's dangerous, and that little fence isn't much of anything really. But I do appreciate the update. I hope, um, maybe if we can get something going with the neighbors, neighborhood, um, people can sign letters or something and we can get those, um, with you and they can get to somebody that will listen. Okay, thank you. Is there anything else? Anybody on this wonderful topic?
Any suggestions?
Sure, go ahead. You have to go to the mic and say your name and address, of course.
Thank you. Joe Demore, mine Cherry Tree Lane. A citizen's petition can be presented at town meeting. I believe you only need 10 people to create one. Is that, would that be right? Rebecca?
Were you talking about an article on the warrant?
Yeah.
Well, what, what would the article say?
Well, they would be able to, uh, ask the town to, um, pursue all available measures to address the safety issue.
But the town is. The problem is the, it sounds like the problem is with the EPA, who wants 33% of the sale price.
Mm-hmm.
If we were to sell this property. Remember, they, they auctioned off all their equipment, you know, each, what, each time the town got nothing. And then on an ongoing basis, forget the building and the contaminants, we are putting aside your tax dollars every year towards the taxes owed on this building. So that money is tied up in an overlay account for taxes that will never get paid.
So, uh, if I go back to what Jason mentioned, to give people the voice, then what other method would, and I'm not putting you on the spot, Kathy, just what other method can, can we give the local people voice?
I think that we have to start like a, a, a letter and a petition and get people knowledgeable about that building because we've had some turnover in the neighborhood and some people may look at it and say, they don't know what it is, they don't know why it's there. There's plenty of residents that still do know why it's there, but there's newer residents that don't. So it might be a good idea to get more of a public information out there and, um, and then if people are willing, that they want to have a, um, a meeting at some point to, to ask more questions, wait and see when, um, Rebecca or Jason has another meeting and get us more information.
But again, Rebecca, 10 people can convene on an issue, potentially convert it into a warrant article.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I just want to at least get that out in case someone has an idea how the town meeting could possibly fulfill Jason's vision to give people voice in an alternative way. Thank you.
Well, I tell you, my vision is just call, you call your state reps directly, call the EPA directly, because that's what they did for Garrison Street on, they called the, uh, the State Housing Authority. They called them directly, and it had an impact. It had a big impact because it made it back in the letter that came back to us. Um, so I think, uh, if enough people start calling them directly.
Right.
I think that will get back to us as well, and I think it could potentially change their mind.
Okay, so I'll get those numbers and addresses assembled and we'll start getting them out and about. But meanwhile, thank you because this, this thing has been an ongoing issue and it's discouraging that the, the state and the federal government don't do more for us. And if it's all right, we're going to move on to our, um, general bylaw review. We saw these at our last meeting. Um, we did review through them. If it's the pleasure of the board to, um, go through them and approve them, we have a driveway bylaw, a sidewalk bylaw, illicit discharge bylaw, Town Administrator bylaw, and Council on Aging bylaw, which, all of which we reviewed and discussed at the last meeting.
And then included in your packet is, um, some of the answers to the questions that select board member, um, Watson had asked about the illicit discharge bylaw as well as the slope limit for the driveways. Um, and following up with the projects and programs manager, we agree that it should be year-long and therefore have revised the language to support such. And then on the second question about the slope, uh, we provided some additional information in regards to why that slope was considered. And in addition to taking a look at that, realized that there were some other inadequacies with the bylaw in relation to the angle, um, of the driveway as well as the slope carrying up through. And then also, um, we received feedback from residents that if there was a, a minor way to, um, circumvent having to comply because it was in the best interest because of the site and specific details or something was specific to the site, was there any recourse to have a variance or a waiver to the process? So we included that. Um, it was noted to make that my office because there wouldn't be much of a delay with the select board and meeting dates. However, if the select board wishes, we can change that to the select board. It was just, again, to try and give homeowners, uh, a more quicker turnaround if there was a need to, um, uh, seek relief from what is being proposed. So I don't know if, if the select board has had a chance to review some of those, uh, question, excuse me, answers, but, um, happy to discuss in more detail if they're not sufficient.
No, I read them. Makes sense.
Okay. So do, do we want to, um, start approving these or to go on to the warrant as presented? The driveway bylaw?
Yeah, so I'll make a mo, a motion to approve the driveway law.
Bylaw?
Yes.
Bylaw for the, uh, for the warrant.
Okay.
Second.
Second from Mark. Any further discussion? Everyone has the answers to the questions? If there's no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? And what we're doing is approving this on the warrant to go before the town meeting. Okay, it's unanimous. And...
In the future, I imagine we'll do the favorable and...
Yes. When the warrant is posted, we'll do the favorable and favorable.
Before posted, final draft.
Oh, yes, okay. But right now, we're post, we're just moving it on to the warrant. Okay. Um, the sidewalk bylaw, that was the snow removal issue?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve the sidewalk bylaw for the warrant. Second.
Okay, discussion? There be none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you. Um, the illicit discharge bylaw, which has changed now to be a year-round thing, right?
Correct.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the illicit discharge bylaw for the warrant.
Second.
Any discussion? There be none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? It's unanimous. And the Town Administrator bylaw?
I'll make a motion to approve the Town Administrator bylaw for the warrant.
Second.
Discussion? There be none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Yep.
It's unanimous. And last, the Council on Aging bylaw?
I'll make a motion to approve the Council on Aging bylaw for the warrant.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? And that's unanimous as well. That concludes the, um, bylaws. The next section has to do with the zoning bylaw, which is about, I want to say, a little over 35 pages long. Just to give you an idea, and I know we're seeing this for the first time, I wanted to ask, when is the planning board hearing on this?
So the planning board is opening their public hearing on March 4th, so tomorrow.
Okay.
And that will be here at 7:00 PM at Town Hall. And you'll see in your packet that you're looking, they're looking to discuss 10 zoning amendments.
Okay, and so the purpose of this overall, would you like to explain it? Because it makes sense the way you say it.
So I just, as we had mentioned, I wanted to make sure to get this information to the board prior to just giving you the final warrant, um, so that you've had a chance to digest it and to be part of the conversation, uh, especially with some of the zoning amendments that are being proposed with the planning board as it is a public engagement forum that will allow for, uh, additional discussion. But again, this was just kind of to get it before the board so that you could see that the language that's being proposed, so that if you had any concerns, you could participate and/or provide additional input, and I could provide that to the planning board, or I could provide any additional information, uh, or clarification as needed. So if the board would like to just take this under advisory to review further, um, and we can keep it on the agenda for the next meeting, we can discuss any issues that come up then. But again, I just wanted to make sure to have it as an agenda item so that you are fully aware and you had all of the documentation prior to be given the very large warrant that we'll probably have before you to go through.
Okay, but is this, this is not the zoning, the MBTA bylaw, is it?
That's part of it. So if you look at...
It's part of it, okay, that's what I thought.
You look at number seven, it's a, a new section to be titled multi-family overlay district.
Right.
Um, and then also, number eight is to add a new paragraph with the description of the district boundaries to add a multi-family overlay district. And then as well as nine, to amend Article Three, Section One, Paragraph B for the zoning districts identified, to add the multi-family overlay district as well. Um, so there's three of the articles that are centered around the MBTA 3A zoning, which includes, like we said, the actual zoning language itself, as well as changes to the definitions that would allow for, um, that to be identified in our table of uses and, um, uh, areas in the zoning district.
Okay, and we're allowed to have our local zoning apply?
So we are presenting it as an overlay. So that means that the underlying zoning remains in effect. So it's just overlays that zoning. So you can pick and choose if you're in that district as to which one you want to abide by. But that also includes the battery energy storage systems that we talked about, the floodplain overlay district, um, the single, excuse me, the ADUs, accessory dwelling units and the requirements that we have under state law. And then it includes an article to amend shared parking facilities. Um, and then the last one is, again, something that was, uh, approved at the last town meeting, but just... but just didn't make it through the process correctly, and that's changing Board of Selectmen to Select Board in the zoning bylaw.
Okay. Okay, so is it...
Most of which we had already been given presentations here, at the Select Board, right? The battery, the floodplain overlay, all of that.
Yes, we had the Building Commissioner in to provide some additional details.
Right. So, do we want to take this on advisement and wait till the outcome of, this is not the final warrant article yet?
Correct, so it will go through the Planning Board.
Okay, and so they have their hearing tomorrow night?
I'd like to see, we wait to see what the Planning Board has to say. And, on, on, on that note, with the MBTA bylaw, whatever you call it, the, if you've been catching the news, the state auditor has, the state auditor has deemed that that is not legal, based upon the fact that it's a unfunded mandate. I think it was Marlborough has taken the, the state to court, as, they feel that they were, that they were wrongfully put into the zone that they are, it doesn't affect us, though, but it still seems to be some, some feedback. And, and I said right in the beginning, that it was an unfunded mandate by the state legislature, they, they always do that. So, I, I think we should be moving slowly on that, and, and let these others play out, and see, see where they go. And, move slowly. Government moves slow, but then they're just jamming it right down our throats. And, see what the others are going to do. Neighboring communities are fighting things, North Andover, one, I think it was Newton, but, move slow.
Jason?
Yeah, the hardest thing is, when you start to move slowly, as soon as you're, without compliance, you lose the funding. It's immediate, and then you run the risk of getting sued. And it's not something that we can afford to do here in Groveland. And with the zoning overlays that we're proposing, that we believe that they'll accept, it's going to have absolute minimal impact in the next twenty to thirty years for Groveland overall. The ADUs is going to have much more impact, and a much more immediate impact to Groveland than any of that. And some of the suits that I've seen come up have really been, when you look at the ruling for the unfunded mandate from the state auditor, that's all going to be hinged on, even in the article, a much more depth evaluation. And I think a lot of it's just going to center around the letter of impact that the state has already been instructed to do from the first case in Milton, that Milton lost, and everything was deemed constitutional and not an overreach. So I, I don't think they're going to go anywhere, and even if it does, we can change it later on. So I think the, the risk to the town is far greater by moving slowly than putting it in place, nothing's going to happen in the first few years anyway. And then, if for some reason it changes, which, given that the state has also come out and said they're going to abolish single-family resident zoning, period, oversized lots, gone, excessive boundaries, setbacks, they're going to eliminate all of that. So, given that, I mean, they're going to, they're pushing forward, and they're pushing hard. So I think the, the risk to the town itself is just far too great.
Okay, I guess, one of my thoughts, I've been following some of it, and the thing I think you need to be careful about, as with anything you hear on the radio, or the TV, or you read on the internet, everybody's town is not alike. We are in a separate classification from the towns that have a mandated amount of building to do, and things like that. We are below seven thousand, and we do not have a train station in town. So that puts us in a different category. That puts us in the category of just having to designate where you could have this kind of, I want to say condensed, but that's not the right word, is that the right word? Housing, what do they call, refer to the housing when it's?
Density.
Density, that density is a better word, where you could have that type of housing density, and in the different forums that we've been hosting, it's been shown to us, and we, and our town planner is sitting right here, that our downtown area complies, density-wise, as it is, without putting anything else in there. And we're not mandated to meet some maximum amount of building, because we don't have a train station. So I think you have to be careful when you look over the fence at another town, in all different aspects, you know, of our town, because there's so many different nuances, town to town, it's not always apples to apples, you have to be careful about it. I mean, sometimes, yes, you learn from the other towns, but sometimes what their problem is may not completely match what your problem is. I think in Groveland, we're all concerned about being overrun with development, we've seen the increase in traffic going down through Main Street, there's certain times of day, then unless somebody's really nice, you're not getting out of Gardner Street anytime soon. You know, you're going to have to sit and wait, and it didn't used to be that. We used to have a basketball cart in the middle of downtown, okay? You know, that's how slow things were. And, and now it's gotten a lot busier, and a lot more costly to run this town, and part of running this town and keeping our taxes low has been the ability of all of our departments to bring in grants. Our police department does it, our fire department does it, our highway department does it, our town administrator does it, Council on Aging, it goes on and on. We, we supplement our tax dollars with a lot of small, little grants that may not seem like a lot of money, but they are the things that allow us to get the job done, that we couldn't otherwise get done. So, to take the risk of losing that base, I would have to have a basis of, of significant harm to our town that could be identified right now, because I don't see it in what's going on. We're not like North Andover, we're not like Ipswich, or Raleigh, or train stations towns. And that's why, understandably, they're very upset. They have every reason to be, because they have a whole nother set of requirements that we're not subjected to. So, for once, we can kind of take a breather on something, and, and not get all riled up about it, until we have something that matters. But, from what I understand of why all this zoning is coming forward, is it is our opportunity to craft our zoning alongside this, for what we like and don't like that's allowable. So people should pay attention, and if you can't get to the Planning Board meeting, watch it on YouTube, watch it on public access, and pay attention, because maybe you'll see something that you don't agree with that we can change. You know, that would be what we're looking for. If you see something coming forward, and you think, well, can they change that? Because I don't like that, where I live, that would affect me, then by all means, you know, bring it forward to us, that's, that's what we're looking for, and that's what the Planning Board is looking for. And I know it's hard for people to get out at night, but please pay attention to this, because it is going to town meeting. It's thirty pages, I think it'll be thirty pages in the warrant, unfortunately, the article, or will it be shorter?
I don't think it'll be that long.
Okay, perhaps it'll be shorter. But these, these items are always difficult to try and really discuss in the context of a two-hour town meeting. So I really wish people would take time to let us know what they're thinking about in, in advance. Would it be worthwhile at all to do any kind of a survey in the town after the Planning Board hearing, and see?
So we do have a project website, and we are still soliciting feedback from residents about the proposed overlay districts.
Great.
So it is on our website at GrovelandMA.com, and if you go to Grants and Projects page, and click on the MBTA 3A icon, you'll see at the very top that if you click on the, the site, it will take you to our program site on the Inez Associates interactive page, and it does allow you to submit comments, questions, and participate, and actively participate in identifying what type of housing and what location that you would prefer, if we are to move forward.
Oh, okay, similar to the workshop that we had?
Correct.
Okay, okay, so that's good. You have an impact about these issues of impact that town me?
Yes, I want to explain how these two issues are going to be dealt with at town meeting.
Oh, how they're going to be on the, when we get to town, wouldn't you do that at town meeting? Okay, two minutes on the clock, go for it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I really appreciate it, it's unusual, but thank you for the discretion to allow me to speak, Joe DeMore, Nine Cherry Tree Lane. There's expertise at town meeting, there's expertise with people on the zoning board, they'll speak to the two issues that are pretty significant this year, accessory dwelling units and the MBT Communities Act, and implementation, and consequences for not being compliant, and so forth. But there's also a physical section at town meeting that people should know about, those who have never been to town meeting, where there are people sitting there that cannot vote, because they don't live in this town. And within that group, we have two experts, one of them is Emily Inez from Inez Associates, I believe she'll be there, and certainly our, our building inspector. I am crafting with Rebecca, through a series of meetings, on how to prepare for town meeting, but regarding those two issues, one or two, it probably will be that we will have a mini presentation by, perhaps Emily Inez regarding the MBTA, just so people can get up to speed right there at the town meeting as well. Now, in advance, if they could watch meetings, study minutes, and, and, you know, be involved in other ways, that's fine, but the reality is, some people are going to learn for the very first time about these issues in a very big way that night, and we're going to try to collapse that, that learning curve, by having people there available, for me to be able to call on for clarification, and for details, and for expertise. So, thank you.
Joe?
Yes.
In the past, what we've done is had any type of presentations running, like on a loop, prior to the town meeting, because it is a people's meeting, and they don't have to allow anybody to speak, and they don't have to allow any presentation that's not on the warrant. So, I mean, people can say no, as, you know, depending on, you know, how lengthy the town meeting gets, because people get tired, and, and people, you know, don't want to be there till ten at night, so...
Where would you place the, the presentation, before the town meeting?
Yeah, run it on a loop and have it, so if people want to come in on the earlier side, and usually we're sitting there waiting, so maybe in the foyer, or in the gym, if we're not using it, have information available for people to look at.
That's fine, I, I will...
Yeah, I, I understand your wish and everything, but I just know in the past, we've had difficulty in town meeting, we still have difficulty getting a quorum in, and then we still have difficulty holding on to that quorum, you know, so I, I think that...
I'll evaluate options, Kathy, I appreciate it, but having a presentation that people are not there is not a presentation, we need to have a presentation where people are there.
But they're there to vote on the warrant.
I understand.
And the presentation's not on the warrant. So that would be my concern, I'm just, I'm just sharing my concern, that people, I think, legitimately could say, no, we don't want this. And then you'd kind of taint the article with a bit of an anger, you know what I mean? Because they didn't ask for that.
I understand.
And they came to the town meeting to vote the warrant, and the warrant's long, it's always long. So, I just, I just don't know, Joe, that that's going to, because they have to give permission for people to speak who aren't from this town. And we typically voted, last year, we voted a block of names, or whatever?
Last year, we tried to be a little bit more efficient, and do that right at the beginning, so that we could identify...
Yeah, we voted a block of names of, of some of the town employees that we knew would...
Well, I, I will, I will explore the best options to be able to get some information from expertise there, whether it's the beginning, or the middle, whatever, I'll, it'll be sensible, and, and the idea is to make the meeting efficient, so that we don't slide into a very long session of people wanting to make comments, and arguing with each other, and struggling with an issue that they're shocked about. These are, these are issues that will shock some people, and we're trying to, I'm, I'm working with you, and trying to collapse the curve, the learning curve. And absolutely, I respect what you're saying, I will absolutely work with Rebecca to find the best pathway to get expertise to be available to address any questions. And if that requires a presentation, perhaps at the beginning of the meeting, or prior to it, then certainly I'd be open to that.
Right, I mean, I think our Planning Board, and our Zoning Board, and our Building Inspector will all be there.
I understand.
They would know most everything, I would hope. But, okay, but I, I mean, it's, it's a thought, I guess, maybe wait till we get into the warrant posting, and see how much is on the warrant. It's always, it's always kind of wait till the last minute, and see how many things are going to be problematic, you know, because they think, right now, we have a, a budget problem, that's pretty massive.
It's a big meeting.
Yes, that might overwhelm the meeting, that's what, these kind of issues tend to draw a big crowd.
Of course.
Yeah, but thank you, I appreciate...
Thank you.
Thinking about it, and all that, I know there's always room for improvement. Do we need any more discussion on the zoning bylaw, as Edith said he wanted to wait till after the Planning Board hearing? And, okay, and Jason, I know you're already very involved in it, so can we move on to the, the budget discussion? And we received a copy of the revenue forecast, and the budget submission, and thank you, it's very comprehensive, I like that. Everything you need to know, and everything you maybe didn't want to know is in here, right? Just about, okay. Do you want to give us just an overview of where we are in the budget process?
Of course, so before you, you have the budget book that was prepared and presented to the Finance Board. You also, as part of your packet, at the end of the budget book, have an updated budget. That budget reflects some of the newer numbers, and more of the final numbers that we received from Essex Tech, as well as Whittier Technical School. So there was some increases that we needed to account for, which changed some of the other requested and/or proposed figures. So those are before the Finance Board currently, the Finance Board is still meeting with the departments, and going through the budget request by the departments. I'm pretty certain that they're just about wrapping up their department review, and will be starting to look at the budget in its totality, to figure out exactly what they would like to recommend moving forward to the Select Board. So as you'll see in your packet, we're looking at an estimated revenue for fiscal year twenty-six of the twenty-four point two million dollars. That is, reflects the predicted revenue minus the two-hundred-and-one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-eight for the assessors overlay, the overlay deficits, the cherry sheet assessments, and the library state offsets. So again, that's some of the money that we were talking about from the Valley Screw, that we need to set aside and cannot utilize. So the budget requests that came through, and the proposal that's been submitted to the Finance Board, totals about twenty-four, twenty-four million-two-hundred-and-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty for support for municipal services. The budget also, in the budget book, only includes a three percent increase to the Pennsyltown Regional School District, as we saw at the presentation that was provided by the Superintendent. We typically see about a two-point-six-eight percent increase in our assessment over the course of the fiscal year. And so, we provided a three percent, which amounts to about three-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars, in addition to what we already provide the school, which is a little under eleven million dollars, including the capital funds. The school committee and the Superintendent have been discussing a seven percent increase, which would amount to eight-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand dollars, for the town to come up with, in order to meet that percentage increase. Unfortunately, we cannot do that without making severe cuts to our budget. The town is limited by a two-and-a-half percent increase in the tax base, and that's based on the prior year's levy. The last year's levy was about eighteen-point-four million dollars, and if you do the map, math, you're essentially only creating about four-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand dollars of new revenue. So obviously, eight-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand dollars, six passes what we've been able to increase in taxes from what were required under the law by two-and-a-half percent. There is additional monies that we do collect in the form of revenue, and that's through local receipts, as well as state aid, but those are pretty consistent, so we don't really necessarily see any increases. So if we're starting with a level-funded budget, we're starting with those monies already allocated, so you're not really able to do anything unless you shift monies around in the budget. So that being said, we do have a, a budget that looks at being level-funded, the budget that's before you had about, I think, forty-two dollars in the black at the end of the day. But again, we'll need to see exactly what assessment is put forward by the Pennsyltown Regional School District, because if that does increase, we will need to make other cuts. Which, again, from a perspective standpoint, is very important to note, that of the twenty-four point two million dollars we just talked about in revenue, about fifteen-point-one of that is allocated towards education. So that really only leaves the town with about nine million dollars to... So that really only leaves the town with about $9 million to run its operation, and that includes all of-town operations. So that's the highway department, that's public safety, police, fire, emergency management, human services, so the Board of Health, the Council on Aging, veteran services, as well as just the overhead costs for our employees, such as their retirement appropriations, Medicare tax, et cetera. So it will be a balancing act at the end of the day, and it will depend specifically on what assessment comes forward with, from the school. My understanding is that the school committee is meeting tomorrow evening and will be making, or will plan to be making a decision. So we will hopefully have a better understanding of what that number is. And then we will be able to take a closer look and see if there's a way that we can accommodate that number. If there is not, then obviously we will need to move forward with an override. But we do not have any definite details until we have that number from the school.
Thank you. So, most of us were at that school committee meeting and, you know, we, we understand the difficulties that the school is, is facing on the state aid side, transportation aid side. But honestly, we're, we're facing the same things. And, you know, it's, it seems to be an ongoing back and forth. And all we, we shared to the school committee really was that, to make sure it was clear to them that if an assessment is provided that exceeds our ability to fit it into the balanced budget, we don't really have a decision to make. Because if we do nothing, it's assumed we've approved it. So we have to take a portion of it and put it on an override to protect the town in the event that it doesn't pass in another town. Then it would go back to them. So, part of the presentation, the school committee meeting seemed to suggest that each town would have a decision to make. But we all know we don't really have a decision to make. We have proposition 2.5%. We can do our revenue forecast any month of the year, pretty much. It's, it doesn't change by that much. So, and I think sometimes people get very confused about taxes and going up. And so what I was wondering, if at all possible, and I know our tax rate isn't set when we go to town meeting, but would it be possible, you know how they have the calculator whenever there's an override, right? Why couldn't we have a calculator that shows how much your taxes would change just with the balanced budget? So people could see, based on the current tax, you know, based on what we think will be it, you know what I mean? We should be able to tell them approximately how much their taxes are going up from just prop 2.5%. But if they typed the value of their home in, what would it be to them? Because I think that might help people... Sometimes the strangest rumors seem to go around that people with the same value house, one person's paying 850 more and another's paying 850 less. And I'm like, that really shouldn't happen. Because if that happens, you should go down to the assessor's office and find out why. Because your taxes, last year, we balanced the budget. There was no override. Your taxes should have gone up the 2.5% based on the value of your home. And when the values of the homes go up, the tax rate actually goes down. Because we can't collect any more than 2.5% of the revenue we collected the prior year. It's that simple. But if it would help people to have on our website to just see what their approximate, make sure we word it correctly, because tax rate's not set, could we do that?
We can do something like that, yes.
I think that might be very good for people, because they seem to only focus on an override and not on, well, how much are my taxes going up with just the balanced budget? This is what it would be. And that gives people an idea. I just think there's a lot of concern right now with rising costs and, and for good reasons, right? We're looking around the price of gas. I don't know if anybody has gas heat, and you got your bill lately. The supply cost of gas went through the ceiling for some reason, and enormous gas bills are going out. And don't get me started on the price of eggs. I'm not gonna even touch it. But, you know, it, prices have risen, costs have risen. So maybe, understanding that, if we're able to keep our taxes at our 2.5%, this is why, this is what we're doing for you as a taxpayer. We're trying to hold the line. And I think all of our departments do an amazing job moving money around, you know? Oh, this year we have this many elections. Well, we don't have that many next year. That money goes somewhere else for a year. It's, it's that kind of thing in this town, and that's how we get by. That's how we get by. So, we're trying to do it again this year. We just don't know what the school assessment is going to be. I think Merrimack is in a similar position to us, looking at a sizable increase as we are, much, far more than we can afford. We're short about, what, $540,000 from what they would like us to be able to pay. We have nowhere to go for that. We're not, we're not gonna cut our town departments that much. That's, that's ridiculous. So buckle up, it could be a bumpy ride. Any comments? Ed, I know you asked about enrollment at the meeting.
I did.
Yep. And enrollment has gone down, a little bit up in the elementary. But in our town, our residents, we're growing. So in a way, our services are losing ground with what we're doing right now. Because our town is growing, and we're not able to grow our services at that same rate. Anybody else wanna weigh in on the, the budget woes? It is a well-put-together budget, well documented, you know? So, shall we approach this when we know what the school assessments are and kind of make our decision then?
It will change based upon the school assessment.
Yep, okay. And then, just to be transparent again, because I always kind of worry about this, the Essex Tech assessment letter, did they get a copy of it in their packet?
I do not believe I included it in the packet.
Oh, okay, we might, we'll give it to you.
I can send that out, my apologies.
Yeah, so for some reason, they have found some CMR, which I don't quite know what that is. It says that they can assess each of our students $7,000 additional tuition if they're on an individualized education plan.
Wow.
I know, I'm not so sure. I did some research on it and I found some rules that said that the sending district should be working, should be agreeing with anything like that. But I don't know who the sending district would be in the case of Essex Tech. And if it's my school, then I have to refuse myself from it. So that's as far as I got on it, but I'd be glad to share the... I just went to the Mass General laws that deal with vocational schools. And the reason that our students are allowed to go to Essex Tech is because of a special provision for agricultural education. That's, agricultural is not offered at Whittier, and it is, it used to be a stand-along at Essex Aggie, and then was incorporated into the new Essex Tech. And that is the one time that you are allowed to be an out-of-district student but attend another vocational district if they have an agricultural path and your vocational school does not. So that's why that happens.
I did wanna bring up some other things about the meeting that we attended.
Go ahead. Yep, go right ahead.
I know that the, the school also was talking about different ways that they were looking at trying to increase the revenue that the school brought in, and also to help decrease the cost. They had introduced some vans in the previous year to do some of their own pickups, which had decreased the transportation cost overall. They're looking to add more vans to continue that process. They also talked about doing a more robust summer program to help, which they're not supposed to necessarily generate income, but it does generate income, which would also offset some of the increases that they're experiencing as well. The last thing they talked about, I don't know how serious they were when they talked about it, was bringing in students from New Hampshire since we're on the, the...
The border.
The border.
As choice.
Because, as choice. Because different sets of rules apply and they can charge more for it, where they're limited to choice in, within Massachusetts, which is something they do not allow at this current time.
So, yeah, there was discussion about ways to do budgets. They did a level services budget, which means they just took everything they currently have and rolled it forward into the new budget. I know here, you know, our town administrator gives some directives to keep costs a certain way, but the process, I mean, from my point of view, from what I see of it, is, is a zero-based budget. Because every department has to provide documentation for everything they want from the ground up. You know, envelopes, stumps, whatever you're buying. All of that detail is provided, and that's what a zero-based budget is. And I know the financial board sits there and goes through all those documents and asks questions about why it's needed or if it's needed, if they have any concerns. So, I think here in Groveland, we do a really, really good job of zero-based budgeting and making sure that we're putting taxpayer dollars to the best possible uses and hopefully balancing our budget. But I do feel that, you know, we're losing ground right now. We're losing ground because our town is growing and most of the increases in our budget are going towards school assessments. And that's, that's difficult. It's difficult for us to try and increase our services for our increasing, increasing population, you know? It would be nice to have more nice things. It'd be nice to have enough money to repair all the roads that need repair. Public safety, I know, is concerned about the growth in the town and personnel and services. And then beyond that, you know, Council on Aging has a very small staff. Board of Health has mostly part-time staff. We have departments that are departments of one person. Our assessing department, one person. You know, there's, there's just, I don't see, personally, my opinion, I'm not gonna vote to cut $540,000 out of our town budget if that assessment comes our way. No. That's ridiculous. Put it to the voters.
In the past, has it started with a high number and gone down? I mean, the past few years, I feel like I've seen it cut back a little.
So in the last few years that I've been here, it's been a little different. And now we have a new business manager. So I believe that there was a lot more communication. And I think that, you know, having the luxury of having Greg LeBrecq very familiar with the town of Groveland and very familiar with our budget, that kind of gave the school a little bit more insight in what they could possibly do.
Right.
I think a lot of times, people don't understand that when we look at our budget, we're looking at very small numbers. You're looking at, you know, expense line items that range from $3,000 to $10,000. So when you say you need to cut $500,000, there's no line item that you can just go, "$500,000, there you go", without, you know, going penny by penny, all right, if we reduce this, and it's just not ever gonna be enough. So I think historically, having Greg in that position really kind of helped all of the communities, because he knew that they just weren't gonna be able to come up with that money unless they went for an override.
Yeah.
So now with the different business manager, I think the last two years, it's been a little bit more of a, a dialogue as to, "Hey, we would like this, but maybe, you know, we'll come and meet you in the middle" kind of thing.
Okay.
Because obviously, we're all, you know, making the sacrifice at that point in time. But I think it was just a little different in the past because of, of the players.
That makes sense. There's a learning curve.
Yes.
Trying to train them.
Well, I mean, when you have municipal experience and school experience, it's very different. Like, I would never go into the school and say, "You need to cut this and you need to do this." I, I have no business running a school budget. But the same with the school. They wouldn't come in and they shouldn't be telling us what to cut in our budget. They just, "We need this because we need this." And they need to advocate on what it is that they need in order to function and what it is that their mission is and their goals are. And we need to have civil, you know, conversations about what that looks like. And I think that's really hard for people too, is that, you know, there's the other side. You know, when you advocate, you obviously wanna be like, "Me, me, me, this is the issue", but you always have to say, "Well, what issues are they facing?" So that you can kind of find that balance.
I mean, looking at some school choice at the upper level where there's empty spaces, might not be the worst thing in the world for them. I don't think at the, I, I know Bagnall, I think, has fairly sizable classes right now. It's not as big as, when my, my children were there, it was, there was a much bigger population at Bagnall then, and we didn't have the addition. It was like...
Yeah, it was tight.
It was crowded. And we all paid bus fees, too. We paid bus fees for every single school. Unless you lived more than two miles away, you had to pay a bus fee.
Which is something else they put, they talked about.
We paid all that. I mean, it's a lot. It's a burden on a family. It's a, it was a burden. But I mean, it was just what, what happened. I mean, I don't know what, what else they could've done. You do what you do to get by. So I think, you know, Rebecca meets once a month with them. I think there's a lot more communication than we used to have, which is good. And I think, you know, the superintendent is, he's, he's very much aware of the town's restriction. He said more than one time, "We are all in this together." Because we're not getting increases in our state aid to meet up with increased costs and, you know, unfunded mandates here and there that they say, "Oh, you gotta do this, you gotta do that." Where do we get the money for that? They don't, they don't really tell us or give it to us.
And this is not just a unique Groveland situation. This is happening in communities all over the Commonwealth in terms of the school budgets and municipal budgets and the restrictions of revenue growth and all of that. So the conversations that are happening in many communities, it just hits a little closer to home when it's your community.
Right. I think, I mean, I don't wanna jinx anything, but it's, to some degree, I think, our school district is in a somewhat better position than other school districts around us that are, the budget process is just a mess. And I think Georgetown lost an override. I don't know if they were able to fund their school at all. I don't know what they're doing. I think one way or the other, what we do, what we all know here is that, that if they ask for the higher amount and we have to put out a request to people, if they want the override, they'll vote for it. If they don't, then the school will hear back what it needs to do. And we did this, what, two years ago, the override failed, right? No, two years ago it passed, the year before that it failed. And last year, they didn't ask for an override.
We were headed down that path and then they reduced their budget and they allocated free ca, what their equivalent of free cash is, which is their excess and deficiency in order to cover the shortfall.
Right, right. Yes. Well, yeah, we're two, two, we're three town districts, so two towns vote no. But I know that both Groveland and Merrimack are facing assessments that are quite a big increase. Mainly because we have most of the students right now. We're about 39% of the budget, and Merrimack's just about the same right now. Well, Snewberry's population, student population has gone down a little bit. So, we're paying the lion's share of the budget, so... Like, if you're financially minded, you would understand that, like, they have a $45 million budget, say, right? So 1% to them is this much. But that amount of money to us is way more than 1% because we have a $22 million budget. And that's where I think there's a little bit of a, a tough for the school committee doesn't quite get that. That, that's, you know, the statistics of that.
I'm not sure the school committee actually looks at that as much as they do as what they need for the kids. And then it's up to all the business people to get together and talk to us and hash things out.
Yep. Well, I do think that, you know, I was on the school committee for a year, and I know they do a lot, and I know we worked hard. But I think we did consider what the towns could afford. We did, at least the years I was on it. Because if you don't, you're just, you're going for an override. And I just don't know right now... And I just don't know right now with the concerns that folks have about the cost of living and social security and everything else, I don't know that people will feel confident at this point to increase their taxes any more than they legally have to. You know, I think a couple of years ago, the override went through, but it went through by a small amount. But I think that showed that people did care, they wanted to restore some of the stuff to the school, so they did. But if it comes back like every year, I just, I get concerned that. You ask for it too many times, it loses meaning, you know.
It's unsustainable.
Right.
To run a budget that way, it's hard.
Right. I mean, but Prop 2 and 1/2 is also unsustainable in, in an inflationary environment. So, you know, this we could go on all night about, so I'll stop. But, you know, it, it, it's a catch-22. You have to decide when and if you need to get additional money and make sure you have a good reason for it. Because it's not going to happen all the time, yep.
Absolutely.
Right, so we're going to move on from the budget and everybody take, take note of it. We'll wait for the finals and, um, I thought last year, did we kind of, uh, look at it in batches? The departments, okay, we can do that again. We didn't have the departments come in, did we?
No.
No, because they go already before the finance board. I don't want to, unless we have specific questions that you really have to have them come in for, I would not.
I think, I think we could do it with the finance board.
Yeah, invite the finance board in. If you guys would like that, would you like to think about that? Have the financial board come in, have a joint meeting on the budget?
I would like that.
Yeah, they're a good group. Make it happen. Okay, so next we have appointments, resignations, resignation of Yaslin Diaz as a reserve dispatcher effective February 12th, 2025.
So I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Yaslin Diaz as a reserve dispatcher effective February 12th, 2025.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? No, okay, thank Yaslin for her service and all in favor, accept the resignation. Thank you. We have no minutes to approve, correct?
Correct.
And no alder and finished business, so it's now town administrator time.
So just a few updates. As I mentioned earlier, the February newsletter has been released a couple of days late, but it was a short month, so my apologies. But it is out and it does discuss a lot of what we just discussed this evening, which is updates about Valley Screw as well as the fiscal year 2026 budget. The annual town meeting warrant is still in progress. We are beginning to assemble all of the different articles that we have going before the board. We've also begun preparing the PowerPoint presentation, which we hope to incorporate this year at town meeting, which will allow for us to display the warrant article up on the screen so that we can make sure that we're being calculated and focused in on what article we have before us. Collective bargaining discussions, I had mentioned at the last meeting. I am still in current collective bargaining with the police union. It is still ongoing, we just had our last meeting on Friday. You'll notice that the back meeting room is almost complete. We have the closet up and mudded and we are just looking to put up the paint and then put in the door hardware. The main meeting room upgrades were just about finalized. You can see that we have the cart in the back with the microphones that will tuck away the microphones and we can unplug and move if necessary to create more space in the room. The second phase of the project includes trying to, essentially, the TV in the back is no longer operating and functioning, so removing that TV and replacing it with another TV, but to put that out in the hallway so that it will be more of like a bulletin board that can show you what, which office is in which direction. If there's an event in this room, it can say COA hosting luncheon right here. It can play these meetings out there in the hallway. So if somebody's waiting to come in or if there's overflow, as we saw with some of the other conversations we had, people were standing in the back, they could potentially stand out in the hall and watch the meeting and only come in when they needed to. So it does give us a lot more functionality. So it would be something that we're looking to do in addition to taking the smart board that you see over there that's on wheels and has a bunch of wires and is still making a lot of inconvenience when trying to utilize the room for various different things and putting that where the TV is. So you'll, won't have the, the dual screens. So you have the projector screen, which we'll still have and we will maintain until the projector screen needs to be replaced and then we'll evaluate what we would need to do next, whether it's a TV screen or something of that nature. But the smart board would be off of the wheels and on the wall. So we're just finalizing those final, final, final pieces for the cable equipment move, which is to move everything out of this room and make it more functional overall. And Chris LaCory has been leading that effort and it's been great. It's been really successful. I've heard a lot of great feedback from individuals using the room. I know the council on aging is enjoying it. The library does get an opportunity to use the room, as well as just from workshops. And, and what I have to do in this room, it's been extremely efficient to utilize the space as you need and set up and break down very quickly as well. So that's been very, going very well. For field use and property use permits, we have the field use permit for the Groveland use soccer league to use the Shanahan as well as the Penntucket use soccer league to use the Shanahan field. Important and upcoming dates, the planning board is meeting tomorrow, March 4th, at 7:00 PM here at Town Hall. The trash and recycling committee is holding a public meeting on March 13th here at Town Hall at 6:30. And then again, making sure it's on everyone's calendar, April 28th is town meeting. For grant updates, Mass D O P, uh, Mass DOT pavement management program, we've received the contract for the Route 97 paving and it's looking at approximately $507,000. So we're really excited that they're going to be able to move forward and, and do that project. That obviously would eat up our entire, if not more, Chapter 90 allocation. So it is nice that we'll be able to finalize that project. And so we're just looking to finalize the timeline. We haven't received that yet from the state. For procurement, we have issued the notice of award to EJ Paving for the paving contract for the upcoming year. We've secured managed services agreements with Partners Technology. They're our phone service vendor. We've executed the contract with Mass DOT for the pavement management program. And we have executed the contract with Mass D E P for the food cart grant that we received from Mass D E P that we discussed at one of our earlier meetings. For technical review conferences, there's no updates. And then for meetings, events and seminars, I have them listed and I'm happy to provide any additional update for any of those items.
I do have one question. What are you going to do this Saturday at 2 o'clock at VZ Park?
Yes, the council on aging is holding in an empowerment event for.
Oh, that's right, you're speaking.
International Women's Day. So that will be at VZ Memorial Park on March 8th, the Saturday, at 2:00 PM. And I will be one of the panelists.
I was excited to see your name, so I wanted to.
I'm very excited about being given the opportunity and appreciate the council on aging considering me.
That's really nice. I had a quick question. Is there a site, like, when you go on the town website, if you see like a pothole or like I did, the tree that was down on the sidewalk? I was trying, I emailed you, obviously, but I mean, what, isn't there like a place I'm supposed to go and just put it into?
So if you go to our website, there is a public inquiry form and you can't fill that out and that comes directly to me and I can then triage that to whatever department is necessary. So there are a certain amount of forms, like if you specifically are looking for a public information request, that will specifically go to the town clerk. If you're specifically looking for a roadway and you click off roadway, it will go to Arthur. So if there's just general questions, it will come to me and then again, I filter those out. So there is a form online that allows you to do that. And it's on the main page, you go to community resources and you go to public input form.
Okay, so people, if they saw like, like I did, the tree or a pothole or something about, they could just put it there.
Correct.
I knew there was a place to go, I just couldn't think of where.
Well, they could email me because I'll go take a picture of it and then I'll contact Rebecca.
Oh, wow, I could have had a picture taken.
I do that fairly often.
We're always happy to help, we just need to know what's going on. So the more we get feedback and input and comments, the easier it is for us to turn around.
Especially this time of year, we get the potholes and the things that fall down. Things happen. Okay, thank you for that update. Do you have anything more, are we all set on that? Yes, then it's selectman time, Ed, what do you have?
I don't have anything.
Mark? Nope. Becky?
Am I going to talk about the indoor flea market?
Why don't you?
Did I take your thunder, Jason? You always talk about the stuff. So indoor flea market at VZ Park on March 29th, which is a Saturday, from 8:00 to 2:00. Free admission, come buy some stuff. Good stuff.
I know. We talked about in the trash and recycling, did we, or did I just talk to you about it? About finding a place sometime, if people just want to have something that's in good condition, but you want to get rid of it rather than throwing it out.
You can rent a table.
Like a swap. Well, no, why rent a table if you just put it there and say, you want this? If it goes to a better home, because, I don't know, my husband took a few of his guitar pictures down. I said, I'll take them to school and I'll say, free to a good home, I'm sure they won't last long. Somebody will take them home, right?
Guitars, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes there's just stuff in your house that's not trash really, but I think, you know, we're looking for ways to divert trash. So having a place where people could say, oh, this stuff is, it's nice, but I don't use it anymore. I was going to just give it away, right, you know? Swap, a swap, I don't know. Anyway, Jason, what's your thunder then? She already took it.
Well, I just want to congratulate Julia Santos and Kyle Shaw being appointed to the Groveland Fire Department.
Yep.
Home call firefighters.
Yep, we need them. And we had a big thing from Comcast and I guess it's just their annual notice, so we don't have to worry. I thought, you know, something might be going on, but it doesn't seem to be. And then we have in our correspondence, I'm jumping around, but a letter from Wes Newbury regarding.
I got a question on that one.
Yes, go ahead then.
If you can answer it. I read this letter over at least four times. In the, in the first paragraph, it says, not reading the whole thing, but the agreement confirms that it is the select board's role to appoint the school committee member for Whittier. But if you read the agreement, nowhere in there does it say anything about the board of selectmen. It just, it says the school committee. Now, am I, am I missing something there?
So I think when I was reviewing the, the same thing, the issue is at the end, it states that the initial members of the community shall be appointed within 10 days after the establishment of the district for the following terms. And then it lists out the member communities, the member municipalities concerned shall appoint one member to serve a term of three years from March 31st of the year in which such appointment is required to be made. So municipality is the key word that they're calling out as being the select board and not the school committee. So in the beginning, it says school committee, like you're seeing. But then when it says the member municipality, they're saying, once that term has expired, that would mean that the select board would be the appointing authority, not the school committee because they are not the member municipality, from my understanding, is what I, I was told.
I think I can still ponder it.
Possibility?
I have a.
Jason would like to offer some information.
Yes, the Wes Newbury Town Council said it was unclear, the language. And so that interpretation is what the select board put together. I spoke with Dr. B. last night and he said their attorney, that it is very clear because of that first statement. That's what outlines who is supposed to appoint the members, which would be the school committee. And because that was delineated first, what comes after it, it references the municipality, but it just means that the school committee is the appointing authority. So, yeah, there's a little bit of disagreement there.
Sounds like it's as clear as mud.
Yeah.
Another well-written document.
In 1967, they were a little less legalese and involved.
I don't even, do they appoint them for three-year terms when they appoint them? They do, okay. Once, if they go to a new campus, it'll be a whole no agreement anyway. So I would say.
If we can make it happen, that'd be, that'd be phenomenal.
Hopefully, well, this building room won't last forever, that's for sure. Okay, um, so also just remember, if you have things that you feel like we should be putting on the agenda, I mean, obviously, the budget is the biggie right now. But I don't want to overlook stuff that we're supposed to be doing or looking at. Feel free to reach out, let Rebecca know and we'll get it on there. Other than that, I think we're, we're good for tonight. What do you think?
On the next meeting, St. Patrick's Day, should I dress up for that?
Well, I think that could be.
So we're going to do the green hair dye?
We're meeting on St. Patrick's.
I really didn't hang up my hair up there, but.
This creates a lot of interesting, interesting ideas.
All right, I'll do the green hair dye.
Okay, well, that will be our next meeting. Probably no one will be here but us then, if it's St. Patrick's Day. Rebecca, will you be here at least?
Of course I will.
Okay. Sure.
Save the green beer for after meetings.
Okay, you going to make a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn at 8:59?
Yep. I'll second that. Are you all in favor? Okay, thank you.